It is Tuesday, March 10. This is the Town of Auburn Planning Board meeting. And it is 7:00 PM. And I am opening the meeting. And it is being recorded and transmitted. Is there anybody in the audience recording the meeting? No, okay. Would everybody please rise and salute a little flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under the blood indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have any A&amp;Rs? We're going to wait a couple of minutes for... Because the first one needs four votes. He's giving a call right now. Now we have that Alice thing on March 26th. And we have our ethics certificates that we're all supposed to have signed, done online and passed them in.
Why was it due?
The ethics certificate? Probably six months ago.
Yeah.
You have to do it every two years. So we've all done it at least once. And so you have to do it again. And the last land assessment meeting was March 3rd. And we got the town meeting warrant articles. Well, we can do the minutes while we're waiting. We have two sets of minutes that we have to approve. Okay, we have... I'm going to do the minutes first.
Sure.
All right, we'll do the minutes first. All right. All right, we have the minutes from February 10. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Who's in the packet?
They were.
Have they been a previous failure?
No, they weren't this one.
The 10th is a giant one.
Wendy Cullen? I know, I saw him.
I believe we handed him out at our last meeting. I guess he wasn't ready for packets.
Yeah. Now, his... I got the 24th here. You have the 24th there?
Yeah, I have the 24th. I didn't have the 10th in this packet. But then we're having a trial.
We have signatures to do. We need to do the signatures. Brian, let's sit here and clear my phone. All right, you want to skip to something?
Start with... What? I'll make a motion to approve the February 24 minutes.
Okay, the motion has been made to accept the 24. Is it a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's have a vote. So who needed the full votes?
First item agenda through the chair is the Prospect Street A&amp;Rs.
Okay.
I believe that there's a special property application we should have to... They want to wait for our fourth member to get here.
You want to wait?
We need four signatures, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, four votes.
Wait, okay. Well, so does she gets the old charm.
Okay. Trying to reach out to her.
He's got a call and... All right, so the next one... Next thing on our agenda is... Packard Chog Farms LLC. Is the benefit of subdivision plan continued? For seven lot subdivision on 71 Curtis Street, Auburn, Massachusetts. Assesses map 20 parcel 14. Okay. And you've revised your plans, I see. Okay, introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening. Craig Horstfall with Thompson-Fowling, the civil engineers and land surveyors for the project. Christopher Blake, the architect of the project.
Rockeantinelli. The applicant, actually.
Okay. All right, then you received the communication with the comments.
Correct.
And you've addressed all the comments, I take it?
We have. We received the review letter from the Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
Revised the plans and calculations. And sent them back to the planning department on pitch.
Okay.
Can I interrupt? The memo that was on the table today, is that different from the one that was in our packet?
It was missing a page, but it was supposed to be in your packet.
Okay.
All right, so... So the comments by Graves are shown in plain text. Okay. And the responses are in bold text. So the first question they had was lots do not appear to be irregular in shape. However, for the record, the lots' irregularity factors may be calculated and noted in the plans. And you said the plans have been revised to show the irregular factors from each lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I think the memo that you have there is what we went over previously.
That was from the last meeting?
It's February 12th.
Yeah, this is February 12th. Okay, this is...
So at the February 12th meeting, we had three review letters that we addressed. There was one from Graves.
Okay.
One from the Department of Public Works.
Engineer, yeah. All right, well, so the next one here came in on... We got it on the 4th. And let's see how close it is. All right. All right, so the title sheet, okay, it says that you have the signature block has been revised accordingly. Okay. All right, the proposed name of the subdivision is listed as Packard Chog Farms. Okay. So the name of the subdivision has been changed, revised.
Yes.
And what is it now?
It's still Packard Chog. It's just spelled with a K rather than a CH.
Oh. Okay. Okay, recommended sidewalks be placed on one side. And you revised it to show the sidewalks?
Yes, we have.
Okay, on one side of the road? All right, so there is a request submitted to allow sidewalks on one side of the road and not on both sides. Okay. Okay, fencing is going to be provided around a detention pool. We discussed that. Yep, so the fence is added. Okay, that's good. Bearings for the street layout and the long property lines need to be provided. In addition, the plans should be signed, stamped by a professional land surveyor. They were revised. Okay, great. Proposed drainage system located at the Curtis Street intersection needs to be reevaluated. The existing soil in the area consists of compact glacial till with limited permeability and seasonal high groundwater at approximately 2 to 3 feet. On-site soil testing needs to be provided in the area of the proposed leaching basin and a proposed detention pond. In addition, the engineer's office does not support connecting the proposed drainage system to the existing catch basin on Curtis Street. And what did we do for that? Did the soil testing?
We did. We initially had a drainage area up here in the front.
Yep.
Once we did the soil evaluation, we discovered that the groundwater table was too high to utilize any drainage in that area. So now we're rerouted it all to the rear of the property.
Okay, all right. The K value provided on the vertical press curve is 25. A minimum K value of 50 shall be provided. And the plans were revised for that?
Yes, we revised the profile sheet for a 3% grade coming off of Curtis Street.
Curtis Street, okay.
With a, I believe it's a 1% slope on the other side. And the K value of 50 for the vertical curve.
A driveway for the existing house located on Lot 7 is encroaching on Lot 6?
Yeah, we've reconfigured the front lot here, Lot 7, to encompass the entire driveway.
Okay.
And also to meet the setbacks, which I believe is the next comment.
Okay. The existing house on 7th does not provide minimum 30 foot, and you've moved that?
We have.
Okay. Proposed runoff is directed from the gutter near Station 3 towards the center of the cul-de-sac. This creates a potential icing problem as runoff crosses two lane... Two travel lanes. The catch basin should be provided at Station 3, left and right. And a manhole at approximately 3 plus 15, which should discharge into the bio-retention area. If the cover of the drain line is less than 3 feet from Class V reinforced concrete pipe should be provided. And you have put catch basins in there? Okay, now, what about the pipe?
We've recently revised the plan to specify Class V for the sections of pipes that run from CB1 and CB2 over to drain manhole 1. They have some shallow cover, so those will be Class V. The rest of the piping is greater than...
Is that greater, right?
As the required amount of cover.
Okay. Class V RCP has been specified for the pipe between CB1 and DMH-1 and CB2 and DMH-1. The notes on the sheet 9 have also been updated. Catch basin should be provided at the end of the cul-de-sac at the low point of 594.4 feet. It's necessary to accommodate runoff during winter months, especially this winter. All right, so you've got the...
We have added a catch basin.
Okay, all right, good. Sewer main located under the bio-retention area has 1 to 2 feet of cover. A minimum of 5 feet should be provided. All right, so you revised that bio-retention area?
We did. We've eliminated that bio-retention area altogether.
Okay.
And we've also, even after we did that during the first round of revisions, we still... I think we had 4 feet of cover right at the manhole. So this set of plans drops the sewer main another foot. That provides 5 feet everywhere, or in excess of 5 feet.
All right, so Curtis Street's a private road in this area. The planning board may require improvements to allow acceptance of Curtis Street as a town road in conjunction with the acceptance of process of this subdivision road. All right, this comment's still valid. And we have not been able to get a response yet from the town attorney on that, whether or not you can connect a public road to a private road. He's been out of the city for a while. We have a call-in to him. But the 15-foot road width there is unacceptable for the fire department, I would imagine, because you can't get two fire engines through it.
I thought it was up higher that it was 15 feet wide, not where we're entering. I thought it was up near Stone Ridge that it was 15 feet wide, not where we're talking about entering the street.
Well, where does the public street end? How far up?
Right at the edges of it.
All right, it ends right there?
Yes.
Okay, so this is public up here?
Mm-hmm.
Where the 15-foot width is? Okay. So... So it's private from here down?
Yes.
Okay. You'll have to look at that. It's private. Did you see it? Did you see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can show you on the screen also.
Yeah.
It's right here.
So right where the road is coming in, just before the road is coming in, it ends as a public road. And so from where their road is starting going down, it's private.
Right.
But what he's not... Where he's requesting to upgrade the road is up where Stone Ridge is, which is a public road, which is nowhere near this site.
It's right here. About 120 feet.
About 120 feet? Okay. Once again, we'll let that one go by for just a line. Site distance on Curtis Street is limited in this area. Existing sloping site distance should be evaluated to verify compliance with MAP and Department of Transportation site distance recall. All right, you got the site distance on the plans now?
Yeah, we have. We've labeled the... There's an excess of 200 feet in either direction.
In either direction?
Which means MassDOT.
And you've got the street light to be provided at the intersection of Curtis and at the end of the cul-de-sac. So you have two street lights in now?
We do.
Okay. There are no wetlands shown on the plans. Provide a statement from a wetland scientist that there are no wetlands resources within 100 feet of the proposed work. You got that? Okay, you got the wetlands added to the plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the buffer's on.
Okay, the 100-foot buffer zone's on there, yep. Okay. There were no erosion control plans submitted as part of the project. These plans are required as stated under 3.3.2.1R of the subdivision rules and regulations. So you got the erosion control plans have now been submitted?
Correct.
And he's concerned about the straw line? Should be extended a little bit to protect the downslope and the grading thing?
The previous plan, we had stopped it somewhere in this area. But we've now extended it.
All the way down?
Up along.
Okay, yep, that's good. All right, so that's been taken care of. And you've got granite curbing should be provided in all radius less than 100 feet.
We've done that.
Got that? Okay. Provide a detail for the bio-retention area. The bio-retention area is no longer proposed. Well, that was easy. The planning board may require an easement for further extension of the subdivision as required under section 4.1.2.7.3. All right, you've got the waiver request in there now?
Yes, we have.
An access road to the detention pond is required for maintenance purposes. An access road's been added. A gravel-based detail should be provided.
We've added that to the plan.
Okay, great. Okay, the slope at the Forbay berm shown on the stormwater basin section detail is a 2 to 1 slope. A maximum slope of 3 to 1 is required inside the basin as stated under section 4.9.2.4 of the subdivision rules and regulations. And that's been revised. Okay. The project is located at an Asian long-hung beetle quarantine zone. As such, the proposed trees shall be non-host trees. And all DCR requirements for removal of any trees, stumps, and brush greater than 5... Half an inch in diameter shall be adhered to. We got that taken care of.
Yes, we did.
Provide a detail for the granite curb inlet stone and transition stone. The granite curb inlet stone detail was added. A transition stone was not provided. Was there a reason why it wasn't provided?
We had shown it on the detail, but we didn't give enough dimensions and so forth on that detail. We've updated that to give some more...
Okay, so the dimensions are on it now?
Yeah.
Want to call her again?
Oh, okay, yeah. All right, stormwater pollution prevention plan is required for the project. Application indicated that SWPPP will be submitted prior to construction. Okay, you've done that. You've made an application for that? Or you've got somebody working on that?
Once the plans are approved, we'll submit that to...
Submit that?
NPD's construction permit.
Typical water trench detail does not specify the pipe diameter as labeled with a question mark. Question mark's been removed.
We fixed that.
The caliper and height of the proposed tree should be specified in the tree planting detail. Added that. Additional comments. Slope of the outlet pipe at the detention basin appears to be approximately 25%. This slope needs to be reduced to prevent erosion downstream of the pipe and to allow the level spreader to be effective. All right. So you... The invert of the pipe out of the control structure has been dropped to allow for a pipe slope of 10% plus or minus. Additionally, we have added an energy disperser at the end of the outlet pipe to further reduce the velocity and increase the effectiveness of the level spreader.
Correct.
Okay. All proposed drainage infrastructure pipe is labeled as RCP. It's required by the subdivision rules and regulations. However, notes 1 and 2 of utility and grading notes on sheet 9 refer to HDPE. All right, the reference to HDPE pipe has been removed. Okay. And the applicant has requested a waiver to reduce the required width of the right-of-way from 50 feet to 40 feet. The engineering division questioned whether there was sufficient space, 2 and 1/2 feet, to plant the proposed trees. A grading planting easement must be required. And a 10-foot wide planted and grading easement has been added to the plans. Okay. Considering the high groundwater near the area of Curtis Street intersection, in addition to the concerns raised by several abudders at the February 10, 2015, planning board meeting, a sub-drain may be warranted within the area of the proposed cut between section Station 0 plus 00 and 2 plus 00 along the north side. Okay, so a sub-drain has been added on the left side of the road from 2 plus 00 to CB2. The detail is shown in the roadway cross-section. So that's it. Okay, the total pre-development area listed in the hydrology calculation is 184,710 square feet, while the post-development area sums up to 183,662 square feet. The total evaluated area shall be consistent in the pre- and post-development conditions. You got that corrected. We fixed that. The post-development peak rates of runoff towards the southerly property line exceed those of the pre-development rates. For the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook, the post-development peak discharge rate shall be equal to or less than the pre-development discharge rate. Post-rates of discharge in the updated calculation do not exceed the pre-development rates. Okay, so you corrected that. Okay, the post-rates, okay. The caliper of the proposed trees on sheet 6 is listed as 2 and 1/2 and should be shown in inches. Okay, 2 and 1/2... Are they 2 and 1/2?
Those are big trees now. Inch go one a foot.
You can put the 2 and 1/2 feet ones in there.
Makes a lot to bring in 150-foot tree.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you where you can get them, out of my yard. I've got about 200 of them, and they keep slowing down, and these ice storm. All right, so the only thing that we don't have an answer on, okay? And once again, we don't have an answer because of... The attorney is out of town, is on connecting the road to a private street there.
Is there any relevance to the fact that it's been approved before?
No.
No?
We weren't on that board. That was approved when, in the 90s sometime?
No.
When?
2010. In the post-development. He... His road entered into a private way, South Old Road.
He was... Yeah, we weren't on that board. That was before our time. That was when he put in the first houses along the uphill side of the road. So we had nothing to do with that.
I didn't know if there was a precedent from that, that's all.
No, well, once again, we're attempting to get a hold of the attorney to find out. He was in the... In fact, he was going to rebuild that road. He was going to bring that road up to town specs when he came before us with that other little thing. That was part of the agreement.
So has your list of waivers changed?
No, well...
You were talking about that last name.
Yeah, we took away some of them.
Okay.
The fence, um... What else? The fence, the... There was something else.
We didn't want a sidewalk at all, and we battered the sidewalk. And the dead... So my comments in the last meeting, the fence you addressed, the sidewalk as well. The kind of outstanding issues, I think. The cul-de-sac, the greenway, I think you guys mentioned that a fire truck could get through that. Is that true? So there's no comment from the fire department? I just want to make sure.
I actually emailed the fire department, but I didn't get a reply. But we've put a WB50 template around there, which is a 50-foot trailer, semi-trailer truck.
Okay.
And that can navigate that.
All right, so the other two items were the easement to the rear property, which is a requirement of the subdivision. Is it nice to be...
We're filing for a waiver on that. It seems that in talking to Matthew, that this... That really... That ordinance really wasn't...
He was supposed to ask the town council.
Yeah.
We can't get a hold of them. We've been trying.
No, this is a reference to the easement going out the rear?
Right.
Two posts piece of land, so it's not land law.
And my final issue was the putting up schoolway into a private way. Unfortunately, I think, you know, without having an answer from the town council, I wouldn't be able to, you know, just vote for, you know, acceptance at this point until you kind of know legally what's allowed there, unless you were willing to upgrade the remaining portion of the road up to where it becomes a public way. In which case, you'd make that issue go away.
Do we anticipate when we would have that in? You said he was away, so...
I just found out he's about 4 o'clock this afternoon. Because I, once again, tried to plant that, and he's out of town. Matt's been trying to get him, too.
No, I know. He's... Matt has also said that he has made this request before.
The previous planning board did.
Oh, the previous planning board did.
Yeah, 18 years ago.
Okay.
We're waiting. So... We really can't do anything. Can we get that information?
Well, I think it's great to see the changes made.
Yeah, all the changes you've done are very good.
With, based on our town engineer's comments. I think it's great. And still have to verify on going over them with a fine-tooth comb. I understand that. Right.
All right, so you're going to go over them with her?
But it's good to hear all the...
Okay. But the plan, it seems you're doing a good job so far.
And at this point, Mr. Antinelli came by today so that we can get the peer review done through Graves.
Okay.
And expedite that in time for our next meeting.
Okay. Of course, we're not going to have another meeting now until April.
It's the 31st.
The 31st? Oh, okay. All right, so we're having another meeting on the 31st. All right.
I don't know if you answered the question. Do you expect the attorney, the town attorney, to be back?
I don't know yet.
We don't know that either.
I do not.
Okay.
I can find out.
I can find out, but I don't know right now.
And Mr. Antonelli brought up the request for the, a waiver for the easement extending to the end of the, back of the property.
Right.
And it was mentioned that we were awaiting for something from the town council on that, is that true?
Not necessarily town council. I think that Joanna and I went over this, and I think we're in agreement that that by law would, is more specific towards the development that has a much larger parcel of land behind it that is undeveloped.
This is only one lot.
And not sectioned out by any form of ANR means. So I think that's more for that sort of situation. That's Joanna verified.
Okay.
So basically, all's we're waiting for is his determination on entering a private way.
Yeah. Anybody in the audience at this point want to, want to comment some more? Everyone, yes?
Hi, I'm Kevin Mark. I live at Fort Stonebridge.
Oh, hi, Kevin.
Soon to be two Stonebridge where I'm moving.
Okay.
Fundamentally, I do not oppose the project. It's under existing zoning and all that. I just do have some concerns. I just want to make sure it's done right. The first one is over in this area, typically, your regulations recommend an INRAD plan be done prior to filing, first part of the filing. I think there's some wetland issues over in here, and the reason I'm saying that is if you do a physical examination, a site view, you'll see the serious depression continuing from here on. Why is that important for planning? Depending where it ends up in the location, it may impact the road layout. It'd probably be within the 100-foot buffer. You could get into the 50-foot, and then there's a restrictive bylaw. So I think that's a big unknown here. This wetland analysis was done last summer by Margaret Washburn, and it was stopped here intentionally. We did not continue over to this direction, because when I was doing my filing, getting my INRAD for an ANR plan, we only had to go that distance. I understand the history here as being part of one of the original developers for the whole project up there, and I think there's a good chance this wetland is all through here. And that's based on, not only, it's not a guess, but reasonable data indicated to me by a wetland specialist. That's concern number one. Concern number two, and I think it's mutual with Frank, is under your guidelines, I think it's 4.7, you should be protecting for any detrimental runoff from the individual house lots on the budding parcels. And there is a slight tilt here going mainly into Frank's and somewhat into my property, and I don't know what mitigation is being handled in this area. I didn't pay attention here, I'm very selfish. This is my side of the subdivision. I have that bias built in here, obviously. It's gonna be a couple houses in here, three additional roofs, driveways, regrading, so I don't know where that water's gonna run. It's a high water table. I don't know where they're putting their perimeter drains and picking up all that water. Is it gonna run onto Mr. Cole's and Mr. Maher's property, or is it gonna run off towards the street? I read the stormwater management. I'm not an expert on it, but I think that mainly focused on the street, the detention basin, those runoffs. I don't think anything's been addressed up there. So those are two questions I have. I'm kind of thrown out to the board. I don't have the answers, but I think those are two concerns based on reasonable assumptions.
Could you look at that?
Yeah, we were anticipating filing an RDA with the conservation commission.
Okay, for that and looking over there too at the same time?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Frank Cole.
Yeah, you don't want the water in your cellar, Frank.
That's right.
You don't want the water in your cellar.
No, but Kevin brought up, brought up that point on, I just, I don't, I am concerned because this water runs down and it, oh, it's over here. And even now, with the water table that's here, in rainstorms, there is water that puddles right here. And so I am concerned because this I call my dry brook.
Okay, and that runs through your property?
Yeah, it runs right down here to the.
Through the back of your property.
You know, and I'm concerned also because this is my property line.
Yeah, and it doesn't go to the street?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't go to the street. And I was, I've been told that, you know, this is the right-of-way for Curtis Street.
All right.
So, and there is, there is standing water in here that's dammed up by, because the culvert is higher than the ground.
The ground, yeah.
So there's, there's a whole area right here that will be profoundly reflected.
And that's owned by the town, Frank?
What's that?
That right-of-way is owned by the town?
This is, this is, this is town property.
Yeah, okay, so the town property is puddling.
Yes, yeah. So this puddling here is not on my land, it's.
It's a town land.
It's, it's town land.
And there's no outlet for it?
What's that?
They don't have an outlet for it?
Well, there is a culvert.
Okay, and it doesn't go through the culvert?
Well, it will, once the water level gets up to the, to the level of the culvert, then it drains out.
Is there something that we can do while we're working there to help that?
I, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, well.
But it's a big concern to me because somehow there's gonna be a rebuilding of Curtis Street.
Yeah.
And, and because the travel way is not in, on the right-of-way.
Yeah.
But this land on this side of the street is all town property. That's the Pappas.
Pappas land.
Pappas land, so this, this here is, you know, if there are problems, it's between the developer and the town.
Yeah.
But it does materially affect me, and I know that this is part of the drainage system that comes down from Pecatalk Street.
So Kevin's dumping his water on the back of your land?
Not at all. Great one, let me.
No, this, this is, this is the way the land is.
Yeah.
And there's, this here is, you know, what do you call it? Wetland.
Did you have that delineated on your thing?
Yeah, what I did is I had to file, I had the fortune, paying the first one filing into the wetland bylaw.
Yeah.
And I had a site engineer, and then I had wetland specialists come in.
Okay, and he flagged it?
She flagged it. We did very detailed soil sampling.
Okay.
And I did that before I brought my ANR to this panel.
Yeah.
And before I obviously went to conservation, I took the INRAD in. I think the concern I have here, that I did forget to mention, is you could possibly, and I don't, I'm not trying to be totally in opposition to this, I expect this to be developed, you may be discharging water by your approval into an existing wetland. We don't know that today. I don't know when the INRAD's gonna be filed, and I don't know if this panel should see the INRAD before it puts a stamp of approval on this, because, just to give you an idea, there's a 20,000-square-foot area right here. Under the new bylaw today, there's probably been about $10,000 worth of studies in here, including wetland, soil conditions, elevations, stormwater management on a single-family house lot is required under the new wetland bylaw in town, habitat study, the whole nine acts. Just to get a conservation approval and an INRAD on this cost about $10,000 today on a single lot. So there's extensive data that flows off. So I don't know if your approval is gonna be creating water runoff into a wetland. I don't think you can honestly answer that, and I don't think I can. I think there's good data say this is wetland in here, but I think before the board makes a judgment, creates a subdivision that has runoff into a wetland, they should at least see the INRAD. So I don't know when the INRAD's gonna be completed or filed.
When is the INRAD coming in?
Well, we, we have an issue with snow cover on the ground.
Right now, yeah.
We're dealing with that, so we're hoping to file that soon.
I'm trying to get it in for Thursday so that it can go before them on the 25th.
All right, it's the request for determination.
Are we blurring the lines a little bit here, though, between our responsibilities in the site plan and conservation's?
Conservation's.
Responsibilities on.
Well, we're also, I think what the abudder is trying to say is that if we were to approve this, it may be subject to cut and calm approval, and is that something the board wants to do?
Under your regulations, 4.7, you strongly recommend the development to get the INRAD done, not, that's just your rulebook, if you look at it, 4.7. No, excuse me, it's 3.2.4. 4.7 is the water runoff in the abudders parcel.
4.7's lot drainage.
Right. The 3.2.4, I think, Matt, is the indication the developer recommended to get the INRAD done.
So this would be, I just want to make sure I understand this. So this would be subject to approval of all the boards, anyways.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to come back March 31st. I just don't want to necessarily hold them up on a site plan application when they're gonna have that review by another board anyways.
I can just back up and address some of the runoff from the houses and the, and the driveways, even though we don't have house plans shown on the drawings as of yet, we have accounted for that in the detention basin. So the stormwater calculations have taken into account a future roof and driveway here that will shed towards the street.
Okay, and what about that other lot that's that one?
Same.
Both of those are shedding towards the street?
All the roofs, all the driveways for the, are accounted for in the.
What about the lots? Do they slope towards the street, too?
Well, there, there's a ridge that sort of runs back in here, and there is a swell that runs down towards the culvert.
Yeah.
In the times that I've seen it, it's a grassed area. It's, looks like a maintained lawn. So whether or not that meets the criteria for a wetland, I don't know. It would be three, three criteria.
If I can interject, it might look like a lawn, but if you, if you walk on my property, there is a definitive gully that runs down to that cover.
Right, that's what I just said.
And I call it a dry brook, but what it brings.
Intermediate.
Intermediate, yeah.
Intermediate terrain.
But I've lived here since 1968, and I am well aware of the volume of water that's moving, and any disturbance in what's there is gonna profoundly affect my property.
Yeah, I'd like to.
So I am very concerned, and I'm not trying to be an obstructionist, but this, this pooling in here is part of.
Problem.
A wetland problem. So, and with the, the town of Auburn is scheduled to remake Curtis Street, I think, in the next year's budget. And I am extremely worried about the fact that my property goes straight to, there's a huge tree right here, and my property line is there, and, and it's gotta be 70, 50 to 75 feet to the travel road. And there is a hydrant right here, it's in the middle of this, that's just about on the property line that's shown here.
Okay. All right, well.
May I say something? Sure. So I believe there are two issues that are being sort of overlapped on each other here. One is the tilt of our property is primarily down towards the retention pond, way down at the bottom. There is not actually enough grade that is tipping back towards the dry gully, as it's called. Most of the energy that goes into that dry gully is actually from the wetlands, which is directly above it, and in fairness, the culvert that's down there is fairly smashed and obstructed, and is catching water and holding it, not allowing it to, to move through the road to discharge on the other side. This is a problem that will be either solved in the adjacency of how our road attaches to Curtis, or when, or when Auburn takes care of the road as an overall. Either one of those plans will mitigate the collection part of that, because it's turned into a retaining pond now. I don't believe it has anything to do with our project, because all of our, the, all the calculations have been done for roofs to be running to the downhill side of the property. And so it's a little bit of a specious argument about sort of running every, that there's enough volume that is going to affect Mr. Cole's area adversely. We're, we're not, we're actually in the good neighbor policy. We're trying to manage, we're not interested in moving any of our water off of our property. We're managing it completely on our property.
Right.
So this, this little section here, which is town, is, is a problem of sorts, but it is a mechanical one that can be easily remediated once something is done with that culvert that runs under the road at this point. So I totally understand the desire not to have flooding on your property. However, the target of the proper, the target of the discussion is actually up, is also downhill and doesn't actually dump onto that section.
And when are you going to conservation?
Like I said, I'm trying to get the, the application in by Thursday.
Right.
And if it's in by Thursday, it would be the 25th of March.
That's before our next meeting.
That's before our next meeting? Okay.
I mean, as you've seen from our, all of our process here, we're, we're interested in doing it properly, so.
Corrected everything.
It's a, yeah, it's, it's a good neighbor policy for us, so it's not a.
Except for we have to find out about the street, and that, everything seems to be pretty good, right?
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Mark and Mr. Cole's comments. I just, I think there's another board in town that's far more qualified to review that type of thing, and I don't wanna necessarily hold their site plan application up to a point in which, you know, by the time snow melts and they're able to do all those things, we'd be continuing them on our agenda for months potentially, which isn't something I think is prudent for us, when there's another board who's, who's gonna review all that and is much more qualified to do so. To me, I think it comes down to the town council's opinion, and I'm hoping that we do our best to get an answer on that by the next meeting.
And you'll be back from conservation by then? Okay.
We should also have our peer review from Graves.
And we should have our peer review from Graves at the same time, so that should pretty much finalize it. Okay? Can we thank you very much?
Thank you.
And you've done a lot of work on it, and we appreciate.
Do you need to continue to March 31st?
Yes.
The applicant's request.
The applicant's request?
Yes.
Okay.
You got a form?
Yes.
Okay.
Would it's formality that we have to ask, if they would like to continue their hearing until next, oh, meeting day?
Kevin's playing a tool, and he's, he's not gonna be.
So our next meeting date's April 14th, okay with you gentlemen?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, March 31st?
March 31st.
Sorry.
Whoa. That was a big shit.
March, March 31st.
So here we want March 31st?
Put today's date there. This is on this date.
This'll be graded. It'll be a peer review.
I'll, this depends on motion that we continue this until March 31st.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. The motions are made in seconds, if we bring this back on the 31st. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's a vote. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the work that you've put in.
Thank you.
John, we don't have four votes.
No.
Yeah, so there's a couple of seconds.
So, they do need a, four affirmative votes for the Prospect Street ANR special permit
application for us to fill. There's a couple of ways to go about this, and we are uncertain as to our fourth member at this time. In our last meeting, she had some health concerns. I don't know if that's contributed to today's meeting. I believe it may be wise for the board to have me look into what happens if a board member who was involved in the hearings is unable to return due to that sort of circumstance. Is there a way that special permit could be voted on in that sort of instance?
Was Jimmy? Was Jimmy here for the original?
No.
He can review one meeting, but that's...
That's it. So he wouldn't be able to do more than one. That's the done rule.
Well, we only had one.
Right, this being the second.
Even if it's not open tonight?
If it's continued, then that is possible. If we opened it tonight and voted to close, and then read our decision later, we'd be waiting for our fourth member, who may or may not show.
Right, so maybe a safer movement, right?
Well, then again, that would be your second open hearing, and if she doesn't come back, that really ties the board and the applicant.
Jimmy's gonna be back April 1st.
First meeting in April.
Right, but then there would be two hearings, and the done rule would not apply, because you have to... It still don't work. Can only review one.
So we'd have to... All right, let me just make sure I get this. So if we were gonna continue it in the hopes that we give Jimmy the opportunity to do the mullin rule, we'd have to continue it to the first meeting in April, Wendy's back, and not the next March 31st meeting. Or we would continue it to March 31st, hope that Wendy's back, at which case, if she's not, we could still then continue it without opening it, and Jimmy would still have that option?
Yeah.
All right, so we don't open it?
That's right.
So we're better off not opening it then, okay?
I think so.
All right.
Obviously, I believe...
Because we wanna get him to full vote.
The thing is, the applicant is ready today, and this just creates a little delay, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, we hope that our member is in good health, given the circumstances we heard about.
Jimmy's back the first meeting in April.
April, yeah.
Is it possible to withdraw and reapply?
Does he have to be?
I don't think you would need to if you continue until that time.
Could you go to the 23rd and then not open it?
24th and not open it.
So you just make the same decision on the 23rd?
31st.
31st.
The town meeting. Or 30th, whatever.
Yeah, that's correct.
So you could just do that, and then you just... If the people aren't here to vote, you just don't open that one either.
And then go to the next one.
Keeps your options open.
And then Jimmy will be back, and he can look at the first meeting that we had, and then he's able to vote.
Just don't wanna make things worse for you by... Because we can't get enough people here.
Right.
So then... Matt doesn't open?
No, it would not.
You still need a motion to continue to...
Unless you accept the written continuation received today.
All make that.
The motion to accept this. Thank you very much, John. Sorry about that.
Not much you can do.
Okay, motion was made. Seconded, yeah?
Seconded.
Motion's made in second, continue it till the 31st. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. The motion. Okay, now what else we got here?
We got the request for continuance for Elmwood Street Gibson Road until March 31st hearing. Notice received by our office March 9th.
Okay.
I know there's been... They've been asked to do a lot of work with our town for some outstanding issues there, not only with the engineering department, building and planning as well. There's a lot of issues that need to rectify, and due to some of the ongoing roof issues, a lot of our departments have been unavailable to to work on this, so...
When does he wanna continue?
To the next hearing.
31st.
Do we think he'll be...
Ready?
Ready then?
He does have a meeting with us Thursday?
A meeting Thursday, yes.
He's got a lot of things to do. I've said it enough times, to... And one of his... What is he?
Yeah, I mean, that comment letter is pretty uncommented.
All right.
Well, I think we don't have a choice, right? We can't extend him later anyways, since he's requested it to the 31st. So make a motion to continue or to accept the continuance to the 31st, but maybe with a strong recommendation that he...
Have everything ready.
Get everything ready, and/or provide a next continuance date that he would reasonably receive ready to complete on that.
In preparing and stabilizing the bank and all of that stuff, you can't start that for a while.
Are you talking about the road?
Yeah.
No, to stabilize the... Stabilize the lots where he's gonna build.
Yeah, well...
Get into that, make sure all the stumps are removed.
That would be the first thing to do, but any construction or anything like that, they still have a ways to go for hydrology calculations.
So they don't have any of that yet?
They do, it's... There's just some extending comments.
I think what you're referring to is that on their prior application, which the lots that are under construction, there were pieces that they needed to complete that they haven't completed, which made it kinda hard for us to review. The new application, the other one was, I don't know what the right word is, but non-compliance.
I think once the snow melts, they're just gonna need to stabilize the entire site, because they clear cut the...
I know, the lots.
The lots that are on the table now, so what do they do?
That whole hill could be unstable with its water.
All the logs out, the stumps out. I wouldn't allow them to fill on top of those stumps or anything like that.
I would...
Because then when they rot, it just goes down.
You get little critters.
Anything that they do, they need to stabilize that thing, that site before they start anything.
All right, so... So we're continuing that till the 31st?
Yeah, with the recommendation that...
With the recommendation that everything be completed?
I'm gonna include that as a condition if you want.
Or give us a substantial notice that it isn't?
Yeah, so Eric suggested we include it as a condition, which I'm fine with. The condition should say something along the lines of if he continues beyond March 31st, you provide us with a, the next continuance date in which you can use it when you need it or something. You guys, you know what the intent is.
All right.
You make a net motion.
That's been made.
Yeah.
Your second. All those in favor? Aye. You got that. All right, so next thing we have is 769 Washington Street.
310.
310? Oh, 310 Washington Street, they don't...
You just knew a motion to continue.
Yeah, they wanna continue to get...
Just so we're clear, we can't, because he's an abstaining party, so we can't vote to accept that.
Oh, isn't that what happened last night too?
Yeah. So we do have to move.
We did it last night.
Okay, so we did.
But they also requested the date of 324, and now they've requested the date of 414.
Okay, all right, so where are we now? 769 Washington Street, request to waiver SPA and public hearing for retail store and sales under section 3.2.5.0 of Auburn zoning bylaws. And we have coming before us, Mr. Barrett? Well, good evening, Mr. Barrett. Sit up here and explain to us what you're going to do.
Thank you for hearing my matter. I'm Rams Barrett, I live in Worcester, and I run a kitchen store, kitchen business, and I've been doing it for about 30 years. I presently into Spags, if we are around long enough, we know where Spags is in Shrewsbury. That piece of property, I've been acquired by a developer to do a large development there, and I have to vacate.
And you're moving?
I'm moving, and I'm looking for your welcome. So, and as a matter of fact, time is an essence, because I need to get out of there in one month and about 13 days. So that was one of the purposes, looking for something that was already active in business.
Okay, and you're looking at the old motel?
Yes, and presently there is a printing business, which is pretty much folding, fold his printing business.
Okay, and the printing business is... Now, what part of the building are you using, the front part or the back?
The front part.
What is it, the frontage?
There it is. It's the old Queen, the old King Philip, yeah. He uses in this part here.
Wasn't it cheap, was 20 feet? Well, the site being here, father, because it exists. It's existing non-compartment, huh?
And he's got parking?
It's got quite a bit of parking.
How many employees do you plan on having?
No, we just have one person in our kitchen showroom. And it's one of those businesses you have one customer a day or so on, it's not another heavily trafficked type of business.
Now, where is the entrance to the building, around the side?
The entrance is on Washington Street.
You mean down in the first floor there, or in the...
No, 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 you go up, you go up.
Yeah, so you go up the driveway, and it's behind the front of the building there.
So this is the blue building, that's at Thomasville?
Right. It's up the right side, Thomasville.
Do you guys have any comments on that?
I just wanted to bring the board's attention, there's no proposed site increase to impervious surface, there's no increase to the footprint of the building.
Just gonna put up new business?
This is a business going into a site that exists as is, and any previous zoning non-comporities would be grandfathered right as this site has been there for long before my time.
Are you gonna do any work to the entryway there and the asphalt?
We'll do whatever improvement to do to that, and shrubs are already there. And we'd like to spree some of the building, we don't want it to look like what it's look like now. Preferably not that blue.
So the reason the applicant's here today is just because of the use, retail use requires site plan approval in this zoning district highway business.
Okay, it's highway business. This is a highway business, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a highway business, it's own highway business? It's an existing structure, it's grandfathered?
Correct.
I think it's great.
I'd rather see it than an empty building.
Yeah, to make sure I understand what you need.
This is a request for waivers, so the board will be voting to waive the public hearing requirement and the site plan approval requirement.
That's it?
If the board desires, yes.
Any comments?
There's no residential locations real close to it, up, down, south, so...
The board's list is...
It'd be down around the corner.
Down around the corner.
Yeah, like there.
That's the ways of life, and they've been looking at it for... And if he's only gonna improve the...
Looks.
Color and looks, and dress it up a little bit.
Yeah. I see no problem.
I wouldn't have an objection to waiving it.
The only question that I would have is parking, and maybe that you have a handy kind of situation already?
Yes, it peels right up level up there, yeah. The peeling is right to the door.
So you already have the parking, but I can't get a parking lot?
Are the parking, is the parking lot striped currently?
No, we'll stripe it.
Oh, okay.
We'll stripe it, and that's why I'm there.
Is there anything in the other path, the motel, the long, thin leg of it?
No, it's empty.
It's empty. He just, I think he was in the poster printing business, so you have a million posters.
Here, he used to do big posters like this for beauty parlors.
Right, even the basement was filled with posters.
And before that, there was a travel agency in there. Oh, so you got 13 parking spaces, you get all... Yeah, and you got all that land, you got plenty of space.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of land behind there.
And just so the board's aware, this ortho photo is quite old, there's now a parking lot here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Richer, I think.
Yeah, it's part of Berterra's parking lot. This building is no longer there, the Queen...
Yeah, right, that's Queen Anne, yeah. All right, well, are you taking a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay, the motion's made in second.
Motion, just for the record, is to grant the waivers for the...
Oh, what a nice person, right? We grant the waivers.
Grant the waivers for the waiver of public hearing notice and waiver of site plan approval requirement.
Like I said.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move your stuff in and welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So we have you on for the DCG meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And it'll go get you in line with the rest of the town departments building.
Okay, and hopefully you'll be in here, how long you got to get in here, a month?
A month and a half.
Okay, well...
Yeah, so...
Good luck.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Hope you do well, Liam.
Yes, and visit me video. Thanks again.
See you tomorrow, Mr. Barrett.
Good night, have a good night.
10:15 tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and we have what?
We already talked about the Alice Training and Ethics Study, so I can skip quick to the CMRPC 61A. Just wanna give you guys an update that I attended the meeting that Matt chaired, Eric, to discuss this. CMRPC is about to start a study of...
Of all our 61A?
Yeah, so we don't, basically it's a proactive plan to look at the other parcels in town that are similar to the post property that recently went through the process. The town didn't really have a proactive plan, and therefore, you know, for that and other reasons, ended up acquiring the property. So attending, my comment that I made to Matt afterwards is that the meeting, the first meeting was very heavy on conservation folks, but my strong hope would be that we direct CMRPC to really look at, you know, what are potential options for that, for those properties? What are things that we, the town, might accept if they were, if the developer was to come forward with them, or at least proactively put out to a developer to say, hey, this is something we might be interested in? And to really look, you know, hear the plan to provide a product that would prepare the town in the case that this was to come before us, which it sounds is something of a potentiality. So it's kinda, again, my comment, just wanted to relay my feedback to you guys.
And what would they do, put together some kind of a package saying, you know, these are the kinds of uses we propose for these properties should they come on the market?
Before I answer that, just to continue John's point, very heavy on the preservation side at that meeting. There was a representative there from Worcester County Land Trust, and there was some from the Department of Agriculture and another from...
So they're all gonna pay for it and buy it?
So the reason they're looking at these is they're going priority preservation area.
They wanted us to pay for and buy it, yeah.
Yeah, so they were talking about here, how can we preserve this? In the meantime...
They can buy it and preserve it.
John, Tarlene, we... John primarily was hammering at home that we need to be prepared if another developer comes under 61A. How could we propose that? So I did echo your email to Julie yesterday morning, nine o'clock, and she's same corner as us. It's not, there's obviously understandable concern for agriculture, but she wants to be ready for that situation also.
Yeah, when we were looking at it for the school way back in the late 90s, the state came in big time about you can't convert, you can't take it, you can't take existing farmland.
If the land is to be preserved, that's great, but I think the exercise is that the potentiality that somebody comes out isn't gonna retain it that way.
Well, because they've already moved all the animals out.
What's the plan and how do we respond to that? So my only concern was just that, you know, when you're at a table and CMRPC who's preparing this hears from almost everybody that, you know, preservation's the best option, when that's not really the exercise, just we wanted them to waste their limited and valuable hours on that, and the town ended up not getting the product that they need to be prepared.
So I guess I'm missing some of it. They're looking at that each and every 61A parcel that exists, they would want to...
Yeah, I think it's only two.
There was two that they were...
There's a total of seven actual parcels, but it's two owners, so it's the Kelly Street, which is four, five parcels.
There's other 61A land.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is, sir. And then the other two are down South Street. The other two are down South.
We're just gonna buy it out.
And we didn't put too much attention to that, mostly the attention was towards Kelly Street.
Yeah, the big, big one.
Yeah.
And once again, you know, what's a property like that worth? Who's gonna buy it, who's gonna preserve it?
Yeah, because I thought it initially came because there was a concern for things that were being talked about for different pieces, which could be catastrophic if it's developed.
So the whole point of... So the whole point of even exercising this grant was to support John's point that we want to be ready next time this happens.
Okay. Well, that's great.
And it was just, it seemed lost at our last meeting when CMRPC was here, hearing only one side of the argument, and it was, I think, kind of alarming as well.
I wasn't the most popular person in the room that night.
All right, so we don't have to do anything about that. We don't have any money. Not to buy 400 acres.
Which one is the 400?
Oh, I would imagine, weren't they going to put a housing project up there between Oxford and Auburn at one point?
It was the reserve, the reserve at Ashworth Hills, wasn't it?
Well, that one was there and they got constructive approval, but I think we only, they only got the constructive approval, I'm not sure, it was on 29 of the lots in Auburn. And the Oxford side was that, and that just went south. There was, I think, 100, almost 200 houses there.
Yeah, they cleared all that land, wasn't it?
Yeah, they opened it up off Route 20 and then it died and it went through a couple of different owners and it's just sitting there.
Okay, well, all right.
But up on the hill, up on Kelly Street, there's probably 1,000 acres.
Yeah, a lot of land, that's... All right, so...
Just to touch on the ALS training, March 26th has been established. I know you've already confirmed that you're coming.
I did?
Yeah.
When?
An email.
Oh, well, I already decided what we do. When they run in and they go bang, bang, I take out my gun and I shoot them.
Okay. Be careful.
I hide behind Ronan.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, behind, yeah, hiding behind him, he's big.
Yeah, it's a, kind of a, how to handle a situation like that.
You shoot them.
I'll tell you, you should handle it.
That's it, you shoot them.
Anyways, so that's, that's the 26th training with the police fire department.
These people are not committed to carry all the time. Okay, so next, the 26th.
Yeah, that's the 26th. We have two town meeting warrant articles to support. How the board wants to present these at town meeting is usually from the chairman, unless the chairman would like to delegate it for up to members of the board. Okay, so the two items are the zoning board, alternate member dialogue, and the other one was the modifications to 5 West Street and layout alteration.
5 West, okay.
And I have the two memos and all we really have to do are...
Read them.
Read them, yeah.
What about the modifications to 5 West Street?
There was...
We had to modify the site plan.
There is part of the middle school they had to change up.
We discussed both of those already, right?
Yeah. And our recommendation proceeded. Yep, and that's 24th, 7 o'clock. I believe it was ready, just, I haven't been on yet.
Email the thing to me. Should I translate them into Spanish?
You can.
Okay, I will. Japanese?
Sure.
Are you ready for the town planner's annual presentation, right?
Doesn't happen. It's the Department of Inspection Services.
Okay, so 24th, 7th, we're going to email those things. Anything else we're going to do? Nothing else? I entertain a motion?
We did the minutes, one of them.
We did, yeah, we don't have the other one in front of us.
Yeah, I didn't have it in my other packet either from the week before.
We'll have to give them to you guys. Yeah, all right, send it out.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.